Good morning and welcome to our Board of Commissioners meeting this July 8th of 2025. In lieu of an invocation this morning, we will have a moment of silence. That will be followed by the pledge, which will be brought by Engineer Megan Armstrong, who is with Station 19 B-Shift. Again, please help in joining me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Please now stand for a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our meeting is now called to order, and at the top of our meeting, we do have two presentations. The first one will be with respect to the 2025 Martha Loog Excellence Award, and I will turn things over to our county manager for this presentation.
Good morning and welcome to the 2025 Martha Loog Excellence and Leadership Award presentation. As we are doing this today, we also are marking our 40th year of Excel in Cobb County, so we wanted to point that out. Thank you. In 1993, the Alumni Association of the Excel Management Development Program created an award to recognize Excel graduates who consistently displayed competence, excellence, integrity, professionalism, and other leadership qualities in their daily work. This year, we are celebrating over 30 years of acknowledging and recognizing Cobb Excel alumni for the Martha Loog Award. Before we meet the nominees, we'd like to tell you a little bit about Martha Loog, the former Cobb employee for which the award is named. Martha was born and raised in Virginia and later moved to Georgia. She earned her degree in business from Kennesaw College and then passed her CPA license. Her leadership skills, problem-solving abilities, management style, and professionalism, combined with her efforts to create the county's first comprehensive annual financial report, led her to win the Government Finance Officers Association Award for Excellence in Financial Reporting. For nine years, Martha served as the Assistant Comptroller for Cobb County. Throughout her career, she displayed outstanding communication skills, unwavering integrity, and an amazing ability to foster a team atmosphere every day. While these brief bits of information cannot adequately describe the overall qualities and personality that made up Martha, we hope they do give you a little better understanding of why this award is part of her legacy. We would like to thank the Commissioners, Dr. McMorris, and the entire county leadership team for the continued support of the Excel program. We also want to thank the guests and supporters of the nominees in attendance today. And a special guest that we'd like to point out, Sarah Loog, daughter of Martha, is here today, so thank you for being here. And Dr. McMorris reminded me what we should do. My name is Luke Rector. I am the co-chair of the Martha Loog Committee. Sorry about that. And then this is Stacy Kalashewski. She is the co-president of the Cobb Alumni Association. Thank you, Dr. McMorris.
Good morning. If the nominees will come down as we say your name, please. Our first nominee is Clerk of Court Anne Gordon from Magistrate Court. With over 27 years of service, Anne has led with integrity, innovation, and a deep commitment to public service. She helped launch the court's mediation program, now a statewide model, and led the Unified Case Management Project, a major initiative now expanding statewide. Her leadership during a countywide outage kept operations running through a continuity plan she created and maintained. Anne is always looking for ways to improve processes, support her team, and serve the public more effectively. Two words that best describe Anne are transformational and dependable. Congratulations, Anne. Our next nominee is Major Yamina Holt from Cobb County Sheriff's Office. Major Holt is a leader, mentor, and advocate. Major Holt is passionate about empowering women in law enforcement and advancing mental health support. She created a relaxation room and lactation space for staff, supported GED programs for women in custody, and organized the Sheriff's Cup Football Tournament to raise awareness around bullying. She was awarded the Chiefs Award in 2023 for her service and continues to lead with heart and strength. Two words that best describe Major Holt are inspiring and driven. Congratulations, Major Holt. Our next nominee is Clinton Jones, Recreation Program Manager with Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Affairs. Clinton is a standout leader known for his innovation, calm leadership, and dedication to service. He oversees more than a dozen facilities and over 160 staff. His team generated over $1.7 million in registration fees last year and delivered nearly 4,000 activities. His popular summer camp program serves over 3,000 children annually and was enhanced through a $120,000 grant for STEAM, education, and life skills. Clinton is respected across departments for his positive attitude and solutions-focused mindset. Two words that best describe Clinton are innovative and committed. Congratulations, Clinton. Our next nominee is Business Analyst Ralph Lamucio from Information Technology Surfaces. Ralph is a model of professionalism and resource stewardship, ensuring that Cobb County's technology solutions align with operational goals and fiscal responsibility. Whether working behind the scenes or leading major initiatives, Ralph enhances productivity and efficiency across departments through smart, collaborative solutions. He's respected countywide for his integrity and thoughtful leadership. Two words that best describe Ralph are dedicated and principled. Congratulations, Ralph. Our next nominee is Court Program Administrator Tammy Nicholson from State Court. As Chief of Probation, Tammy has transformed the department into one of the most respected in Georgia. She modernized operations, authored a full policy manual, and created systems that improved audits, onboarding, and productivity. Judges often seek her guidance on sentencing compliance, and she's widely consulted by probation chiefs across the state. She also recently added a GCIC terminal, working with the GBI to meet stringent certification standards. Two words that best describe Tammy are innovative and respected. Congratulations, Tammy. Our final nominee is Senior Financial Division Manager Roxanne Rush. Roxanne is the definition of leadership, positivity, and professionalism. She leads a highly successful team with a supportive, lead-by-exemple approach, and is known for her financial expertise and unwavering commitment to excellence. Beyond her role, Roxanne is active in Toastmasters. She serves on several RFP committees and is one of the most engaged Excel alumni since graduating in 2002. She uplifts her team, encourages collaboration, and brings a sense of joy and energy to every space she enters. Two words that best describe Roxanne are supportive and steadfast. Congratulations, Roxanne.
Please give all of our nominees another round of applause. As we celebrate again the 40th year of Excel in Cobb County, we are reminded that we are fortunate enough to have outstanding leadership at every level. Selecting just one winner for this prestigious award is more challenging than ever, and each time it gets harder. Every nominee represents true professionalism, dedication, and a strong commitment to excellence in service. With that said, one person came out on top. The winner of the 2025 Martha Loog Excellence and Leadership Award goes to Roxanne Rush. We'll turn it over to Dr. McMorris for any closing remarks.
Let's give them another rousing round of applause. As you all can see, we are so very, very proud of each of you. And when they sent me the list of nominees and they said, "Well, what do you think?" I said, "I can't." I sent it right back to them and to the committee and said, "You all choose, because this is the hardest thing to do." So I'm so proud of each of you. Martha was exemplary, and I am so proud that we have employees across the county that exemplify the characteristics that she had when she was here at Cobb. I just want to thank each of you for all that you do. I'd like to thank you all for coming and supporting your colleagues today. The Board of Commissioners, we appreciate your support. You should be proud. You have a workforce that is outstanding, and we just wanted to take a moment to recognize just a few of them today. So thank you for all that you do. Appreciate you.
Congratulations, Roxanne, and to all of our honorees this morning. Our next presentation will be to recognize July as Parks and Recreation Month, and that proclamation will be brought by Commissioner Gambrell.
And if we can have all of our Parks and Recreation folks up here. Well, it is an honor and a privilege to stand up here and give you this recognition today. I remember back in 2019, it was in November, we were driving up to the GRPA Awards Banquet, and I rode up with a group of Parks employees. I don't know who was more uncomfortable, them or me, but I remember having a conversation, and the question was, if you could work for one department, which department would you work for? And I can truly honestly say, after working for the county now for seven years, Parks is the most fun. You guys give experiences to people every day that they might not ever experience. You're always there for them, and to that, I say thank you. So with that is my honor to give this proclamation. Whereas Cobb County Parks and Recreation professionals are essential to enhancing the quality of life in the county, creating safe and welcoming spaces for all residents, delivering programs that promote physical and mental health, and fostering strong community engagement; and whereas, since 1985, the United States has celebrated Park and Recreation Month in July to recognize the vital role of more than 160,000 full-time park and recreation professionals, along with hundreds of thousands of part-time and seasonal workers and volunteers who tirelessly maintain our nation's parks and deliver high-quality recreation services; and whereas, this year marks And whereas, this year marks the 40th anniversary of Parks and Recreation Month with the theme "Build Together, Play Together", which highlights how Parks and Recreation Professionals unite communities, promote sustainability, and create lasting memories through sports, arts, nature, and family gatherings. And whereas, Parks and Recreation contribute to our country's economic prosperity by increasing property values, expanding the local tax base, boosting tourism, reducing crime, and attracting and retaining businesses. Now, therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby designate July as Park and Recreation Month and express our sincere gratitude to the dedicated employees who make our Cobb Parks facilities outstanding and bring joy to residents throughout exceptional programs. This is the 8th Day of July 2025.
Thank you, Commissioner, and all of our Commissioners and County Manager for allowing us to be proclaimed here today. July is Parks and Recreation Month, but really, every month is Parks and Recreation Month, when you break it down. And I've said that before. One of the things that I wanted to really do was highlight some of the folks that make Parks and Recreation what it is. And so, our staff here today, we have Charlie Monroe, who is our Natural Resource Manager. We have Tanya Ashley with our Communications. We have Mr. Clinton Jones, our Recreation Program Manager. Mario Hinson, our Services Division Director. Giselle Jacquez, she keeps me in line most of the time. Darrell Walker, our Operations Division Manager. Jason Reeves with our Maintenance Department. Harold Blacksmith, our Wood Artisan and Construction Unit Supervisor. We have Ashley Allen with our Services Admin. We have Dr. Jotun Gibson, our Public Services Agency Director, hiding in the back, which is very uncommon. We have Caitlin Ivy, a Crew Leader with our Noonday Zone. We have Mr. Josh Bryant. Josh is our Superintendent of our Bishop's Zone. We have Ms. Mari Ramsey, who is with our Special Events Unit. Trevio Chambers, who is a Coordinator at our Milford Recreation Center. Mia Adcock, who is also with our Special Events Unit. Brandon Anderson, who is with our Operations Administration Unit. And Jeff Chin, Jeff is our GIS Analyst for Parks. So these are just some of the people that make Parks and Recreation what it is in Cobb County, and I can't be more proud to be the person that actually gets to work with these people on a daily basis. It's just, it's an absolute joy. They do everything for Parks and Recreation, every second, every minute, every hour, every day, to make Parks and Recreation what it is in Cobb County. And these are the ones that should be celebrated, not just July is, but these are the ones. So, thank you very much. I appreciate it, Commissioner Gambrell. Again, thank you to our Commissioners for support, County Manager, and our former Parks Director, our Deputy County Manager, who was, he's been up here a few times with the July is Parks. So, thank you for that. So we appreciate it. Thank you very much.
All right, that concludes the presentation portion of this meeting, and we are now at our public hearing tab. Today begins the first of a series of public hearings that we will have with respect to our millage and our budget. I will turn things over to our Deputy Finance Manager to help us with our public hearing this morning.
Thank you, Chairwoman, Commissioners, County Manager. Again, my name is Buddy Tussar. I'm our Deputy CFO here at Cobb County. Before we have the public hearing, I do want to go over a brief presentation on the millage rate. And let's begin with the dates and schedules for the millage rate hearings. It was originally advertised on June 21st, 2022, June 24th, 2025, in the MDG. Today is our first public hearing. We'll have three of them. The second public hearing will be held on July 16th, which is a Wednesday, which is different than normally. It's typically done on Tuesdays. The July 16th is a Wednesday. It'll be at 6:30 PM. It'll be a special call meeting. And we'll have our third and final public hearing and adoption the night of July 22nd at 7:00 PM. Here, I want to go over the different millage rates in Cobb County that are, that we are responsible for. We have four of them. The first is the General Fund, which we recommend staying flat at 8.46 mils. We have the Fire District Fund, which we are proposing a slight decrease of .02 mils. And so, everyone knows .02 mils is approximately $1 million in the fire fund. We've had the conversations with leadership amongst the fire staff and everyone here on this board, and $1 million is something that is sustainable within the fire fund in the 2025 budget. We have the Cumberland Special Service District 2, which is a tax on commercial properties within the Cumberland Special Service District that will remain, is being proposed to remain flat at 2.45 mils. Again, that goes to fund the debt service on the stadium bonds, a portion of it. And then finally, we've had the Six Flags Special Service District, but due to the creation of Mabelton, we no longer have that district and are no longer assessing a millage rate for that district. So the proposed mils are zero. Underneath that, I do want to highlight the net digest. It has grown, and we have a net increase of 3.39%. One thing I do want to note is that while we have growth, that growth is slowing. In previous years, we've had growth as high as 8% or 10%. It has come down to about 3.39% in 2025. Here's a more detailed view of the digest when comparing 2025 to 2024. Again, we had residential real property grow at about 3.5%. The gross digest grew at 2.9%, which you will see third to last bottom row there. Exemptions grew at 1.5%, which is a little bit lower than the overall growth, but the net taxable digest increased 3.39%. One example that we always like to show, just to emphasize the importance of the floating homestead exemption on primary residents in Cobb County. I want everyone to see this is a real home in Cobb County, and you will see the fair market value of the home in the gray bars from 2018 to 2024. Now, this is a pretty common occurrence here in Cobb County, where we've had a home that was roughly over $200,000 in 2018, now being appraised a little bit higher at $450,000. What we have here, and one thing I do want to highlight, is the blue bar. That is the General Fund portion of this homeowner's bill. The key thing to note here is it has remained steady since the date of purchase. It has remained steady, and in this example, it's roughly $609. You'll notice that as the bars of the fair market value go up, that blue bar, which is the General Fund portion of your bill, that 8.46 mils, has remained flat. Without that homestead exemption in place, taxes would have been $1,447.64. That's an 832, or I'm sorry, $838.00 difference. It's almost $1,000 of savings as a benefit from the primary homestead floating exemption in the General Fund. If we didn't have it, it would look similar to the yellow bar, which is the school districts, which doesn't have the float, and also the fire district, which is the red bar. You'll notice that they go up in proportion to the increase in the fair market value, because they do not have the floating homestead exemption. So it's a very brief presentation, but with that, I will open it up for any questions that you all may have.
Thank you. What I'll do is open it up for the public to weigh in, and then if Commissioners have any comments or questions, I'll call you back.
Before doing so, Madam Chairman, may we go back to the last slide? I just wanted to see that graph.
The yellow line is the school board line?
Yes, ma'am. So in this example, you'll see the yellow bar moving in proportion with your increase, because the school board does not have the floating homestead exemption. And as such, it takes up a greater portion of your percentage of your overall tax bill as the values go up.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. With that, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing for anyone that would like to address the board. You may do so for up to three minutes regarding this matter and this matter only. We'll take an unlimited number of speakers. The public hearing is now open.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to go ahead and remind you that one of the worst things I heard there was there was a home valued at $200,000, and now it's at $450,000, and that's a little bit. It's not a little bit to me. That's just a way of y'all getting the money. I know you need the money. Everybody needs a raise. These people that are doing all this work for us, they're not doing it for the kindness. They expect to get paid. When we send a law enforcement officer out and we put his life on the line, a fireman out, we expect them to get paid. There's stepping grade. We've agreed to that. We have costs that go up every year. Of course, that money that you have borrowed from the people, that's BS, and you know it. We could throw that back. We don't need you to have extra money. We need to stick to what we have. All stars are here next week. That's a great thing for Cobb County, and we will get a return on that investment. Next year, we will have soccer fiends, whatever they look like. We're gonna have a lot of them in Cobb County. But anyway, you have to do whatever it is to continue to pay the employees that provide the services that are necessary for us to live the way we want to in Cobb County. So do what you gotta do. Thank you.
We'll take our next speaker.
Good morning. How are you folks today? I just want to kind of beat on a drum that I've beaten on a lot, which is the water transfer fee. Right now, there are, if my numbers are correct, 250,000 customers in Cobb County for the water bills. And we've already added an $8 fee. That's $2 million a month in increased revenue. And added to that, there's a 3.5% increase in water rate fees twice already this year. So that means those are up 7%. I'll leave off the 2.5% stormwater fee increase twice. And this is supposed to happen again for the next five years, at least one raise. Yet, we still have to dig down and take money out of the Water Department to feed the General Fund. This is 1% of your total budget. This 14 million, I think it's 13 million and change, that comes in the water transfer fee maximum. We've got to do better. That money is intended for infrastructure, hard infrastructure. It's not a want, it's a need. It's a have-to-have product. If we don't have water and we don't have sewer, we've got major issues. Stormwater, I know, is a problem, but we're raising the money. Imagine what all that money, I don't know what it is, I'll have to look into it, how much money we're raising additionally for the Water Department, yet we're still tucking 13.5, 14 million dollars out of it to fill other needs or other wants. Water's not a want, it's a need. So I say, we've already had a bunch of, we've had two recent overflows from the sewer system into tributaries, which we may or may not be fined for. So we know we need to work on the infrastructure, but why do we keep taking money out of it to feed other beasts? That's all I want to see, is good management of our money, that we keep the money in the Water Department and we stop this transfer. We need to find other ways to raise revenue rather than robbing Peter to pay Paul. You're not saving anybody any money in property taxes. You're literally giving a regressive tax to the people that can afford it the least in the form of water fees. It's disingenuous, and I would like to see that stopped. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll take our next speaker.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, in reviewing what you guys have done with the property taxes, I will say thank you. Because I was able to use the tool that the Tax Assessor's Office put on their website, and I say thank you to them. And I was even able to advise some people on how to use it. Many of the residents were blaming you guys for their amount not being on their tax bill. And I told them, "No, that wasn't the Board of Commissioners, that was the state of Georgia, and the law that they passed in HB 581, which took that amount off of your tax bill." Another thing I saw is that you guys, most of the property in Cobb County, you didn't reassess the property, so the assessment value remained the same as it was from last year. And I thank you guys for that. I mean, because when I look, read around me, and I look at City of Austell, 158% increase, I look at Fulton County and the people who are having fits in Fulton County, South Fulton, DeKalb County. I mean, it's just been a ripple effect all across the county with people having these massive tax increases. So, never thought I'd see the day that I would say it, but thank you, guys.
Thank you. We'll take our next speaker. Not seeing any more speakers, I'll close the hearing. Commissioners, if you have any questions for Buddy, this is a good time to share, and I'll just go ahead and go down the dais and start with Commissioner Gambrell. Any questions now? Commissioner Burrell?
Just that we are having individual meetings too with y'all to go over everything, and getting input from the public is important to us. So, can we get a copy of this PowerPoint as well?
Yes, ma'am. A copy will be posted online.
Okay, thank you.
No questions. I just had a request to post it online, but you mentioned that you will take care of that, so thank you.
Absolutely. Any other questions?
Possibly a question. I do want to acknowledge some of the comments that were shared.
Sure.
I thank you for your support of our organization and the work that we have been doing to provide the best level of service that we can as efficiently and effectively as possible. And that does require for us to make sure that we have a steady and able workforce and a committed workforce to do that. So I appreciate the comments and support of our employees. This has not always been the tenor for those of our employees who have been here for some time, so it certainly did not fall on deaf ears for them to hear those remarks. I also appreciate learning how effective the tool was at the Tax Assessor's Office, and hopefully that is something we'll continue to use year after year as we educate people with respect to our budget. The water fee transfer is something that we've been discussing for some time. It has been a goal, I can particularly say a project of Commissioner Gamb, excuse me, Commissioner Burrell, since she's been here to reduce it a percent every year. I've seen us reduce it and then increase it and then reduce it. And I can say, over the tenure that I've been chair, we've been reducing it by 1% every year. And we've reduced it again in this budget, and it will be our goal to get that to zero. I do want to acknowledge, though, that that transfer had some benefits associated with it, because we do have people paying for water fees that do not have property here in the county. And there's also some people who utilize water who do not pay taxes, so it was seen as a way of providing some recognition that there are others using our infrastructure who may not necessarily be paying property taxes. However, there has been continual questions- However, there has been continual question, as has been shared, this is an integral resource to life, and so there should be some consideration. That shouldn't be taken lightly as we utilize those fees, and that's something that this board does recognize. We also wanna curry the favor of the public and the trust of the public, and we know by continuing to have that transfer that it undermines that. And so each year, I believe that we will have a concerted effort to reduce that to zero. And lastly, the comment about property taxes in the region. You've seen in the news that there are other areas that have seen exponential increases in property taxes. And I can say that I'm very proud of the work of all of our staff and our leaders here, and particularly our finance team, in ensuring that we can maintain a high level of service by being as efficient as possible. And they, and our Board of Commissioners, were all stewards of your tax dollars, and it is a good feeling to know that we are not continuing to burden excessively our public, who, and everybody's experiencing economic hardship at this time, so. Thank you for recognizing how Cobb compares to the region and other localities with respect to our property taxes. With that, thank you for your presentation. I really loved the slide with the school taxes.
Yeah, thank you all.
And the homestead exemptions. I think a picture's worth a thousand words. That might be worth more. With that, we'll go ahead and close that hearing, and we now have our second hearing. Thank you. And this is to address the budget specifically. And our CFO, Bill Volker, will be providing that presentation.
Good morning, Chairwoman, Commissioners, County Manager. This is gonna be a carbon copy of the presentation we gave at the work session, but there are a few changes. So I wanna highlight those changes as we walk through this. As you all noted, when we did the millage presentation, there is a slight reduction in fire, so we have updated the budget, proposed budget, to accommodate that $1 million shift or a reduction as we walk through this. So I just wanna hit some of these highlights, ask if you have any questions, and then ask if you'll open the public hearing. So we're gonna go through the budget highlights here, but first slide here, we're still proposing four new full-time positions, two of those in fire, two of those in water. And then the only numbers that change here on this slide is we were at $49 million increase, we are now to 48, as we took off the $1 million to accommodate the proposed .02 reduction in fire. And then wanna go through some of these highlights, 'cause I think this is where it's most beneficial to kinda see where that $48 million is going as we walk through this process. And you're gonna see that we had $11 million, $11.4 million is an increase in water operations, and this is due to water purchases, chemicals, electricity, and gas. So again, and then that is just simply water operations. One of the big items that we wanna talk about, though, is employee roster update. So part of every budget process, every April, we take a personnel snapshot, and that accounts for changes in vacancies, as well as updated healthcare and pension numbers. So the personnel roster update, adding no new positions, just the roster update itself increased the budget by $12.3 million countywide. Now, the reason that we did that is a couple factors. We have filled 106 positions since last time we took this snapshot. So the items and the actions the board has taken to focus on recruitment and retention are showing some of those benefits as we move forward. So this is countywide, again, 106 positions. These are not new positions, these were vacant positions that the board had previously approved, and we have been able to fill during this last year. And then also part of that, again, is gonna be pension and healthcare adjustments as we walk through those. The next one that we see is the county is proposing a 2% pay scale adjustment slash COLA, as well as a merit continuation of merit and step and grade. Countywide, that's $8.6 million. The important part to note of that is that would take effect in March of each year, just as it has done in previous years. And then we have an increase in the fire contingency, so this is one of the changes that you'll see. This was $5.1 million, we simply brought the contingency down. We did not change any of Fire's requests, they're fully receiving the positions they asked for, any operation increases, as well as the continuation of capital funding. So their contingency is gonna be just north of $11 million, that is above and beyond requests, so they have some flexibility to address capital needs as those come up. So that is something that we are monitoring and gonna continue to work with Fire on as we move forward. The claims fund, this is our health, where we account for our healthcare claims and workers' comp funds, increased $5.9 million, and that is simply where we put our dollars to fund our self-funded insurance, cover our liability claims and any workers' comp claims. So as pension or, sorry, as healthcare costs rise, that's the primary driver of this, as well as cost of purchasing insurance for our county. And then every couple of years, we have to do a cost allocation update. And what that is, is that accounts for funds outside of the general fund that utilize general fund services. They do have to pay into the general fund for those services. This is part of our accounting standards as we have to do this. So for example, if you're part of the water fund and Finance processes your payroll checks or cuts your AP checks, there's a cost associated with that. If you use computers for ITS, there's a cost associated with that. So that's how that's calculated. That did have a $5.9 million increase countywide. Or, sorry, $2.5 million increase countywide. And then we walk through our budget recommendations, which remained at $2.2 million, as well as impact items. I do wanna spend a little bit of time on those, because those are very different than previous years. This is our BOC impact items of $2.2 million. I do want the board to remember, last year, this number was north of $16 million. So these are agenda items the board approves during the year that have an impact on a future year budget. Obviously, we had some big changes in the previous year. We did some changes to step and grade, as well as some other very large programs that impacted us in '25. The impacts for '26 are much less significant as we walk through these, but it is a breakdown of those impacts. Any questions on the BOC impact slide before I go to the budget recommendations? Yes, Commissioner?
Can you, yeah, can you point out what is state mandated that we are funding? Like the PTSD insurance and...
Yeah, there's a variety of these. We tried to lump these into larger categories, but yeah, PTSD insurance was one of the major drivers that we saw in, as a result of state funding. And I wanna walk through these real quick and see if any other ones stand out. Most of these are gonna be annual maintenance contracts that have annual increases as we walk through these. I don't see any other ones, and I'm gonna look. Buddy, are you aware of any other ones? I think that's the only one I see on the impact items. Yeah, it's just the PTSD, sorry. Commissioner?
And Bill, I know we talked about this, but Commissioner Burrell, a couple meetings ago, we approved the additional $700,000 for this district attorney's office for child support services. But that is not on this list. Can you explain why?
So we'll go back and look at the agenda items. So the critical part of that is any agenda item that has an impact item that would be reoccurring would have to be stated there. So if it does not have an impact item, even if you do approve it as a one-time increase, it would be effective for the remainder of the fiscal year. So we have that happen a lot of times. Departments will ask for funding that is a one-time cost, and then they will have to come back for any additional funding that is not listed as an impact. They would have to come back to the board for future authorization. So, and part of what we wanna do with this is, if there's any agenda items, for example, that is approved as a part of this meeting, this list will have to be updated as we walk through this process. So what we try to work with the departments on is that if you have impact items, we ask that you do those prior to us presenting this. That way, we're not trying to play catch-up, because right now, the budget is structurally balanced, and if you bring an impact item, that proposes a challenge. So that is something that we try to work through very closely on timing, because the last thing we wanna do is present you a budget, and in the same meeting, that budget now has changed, and now we have an unbalanced budget. So we worked very hard for a lot of months to get to this point, and not having a lot of moving pieces in the month of July, and really June for that matter, is very important as us get to that point. Now, there is the ability at always, with any emergency, to say, I need one-time funds. We highly encourage that if there is a need, but the impact item, something that's reoccurring, we ask to do that well in advance of this process. Yes, Commissioner?
And then if I can just add on to that, 'cause we know the DA has had to ask for this money year after year, because again, it's another unfunded mandate by the state, that the state requires us to do, but they're not funding it. So again, all this doesn't directly impact the budget. I do hope we take that up again in our legislative sessions.
Yes, and Commissioner, one of the things that we like to do with this is, you're gonna see on the next slide is budget recommendations, and we'll walk through those a little bit as well, but that is part of our process as well. If we start to see something that is reoccurring, or if it comes every year as a one-time ask, it's not really a one-time ask. So that is part of what we'll bring is budget recommendations to make adjustments, and when we get to that slide, you're gonna see things like utilities that just simply haven't been addressed. So those are causing some departments to run a little over, and it's simply for to pay for water and electricity. It's not for program, programming or anything outside of, or anything within their control is simply utilities and some of those items. So that list of budget recommendations are gonna be continuously updated. We are monitoring 2025, and we're already starting to build the list for 2027 of what recommendations will come forward. Any other questions? Yes, Commissioner, sorry.
Yes, there, is the column in the middle, the impact amount? Is that an increase of what their current budget or last year's budget was?
That is correct.
So we have a lot of lease for copiers that are going up?
Yes, we do. And the reason those are on there is those are, we do those in a way that is the department, so all the leases will go through ITS. But for example, if Finance has one of those copiers, we have to, we pay our share of that lease. So that's kinda how we work through those. But yes, as we do new leases for copiers, those are gonna go up, just like anything else. So we have a line item there pre-existing, because like, we're always gonna need a copier, but if we get a new lease, that may have an increased cost, so we would ask for an increase in the budget to accommodate an existing copier. And that is part of one of our challenges as we go through these, is that you're gonna have these contracts that have an impact and required increase. So if we don't do these, that puts a department actually having less funds available to them to do their operations.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Okay. I do just wanna hit this slide, and then I will ask if you have any generic questions, and then ask if we can open the public hearing. There's a lot of information here, but this wants to show you kinda the level of detail, and this, these are all rolled up into these object lines. This is countywide, or this is the budget's recommendations of where we need increases, and you'll also see there's decreases on this slide as well. So a lot of information here, but I do wanna walk through, hit a couple highlights for you. Some of the largest decreases, we have undesigned contingency of $1.5 million decrease. That was the All-Star contingency. We will not have an All-Star event next year. One of our public speakers talked about the FIFA World Cup. We know we will have an event, but that should not be part of the reoccurring budget. We will not have a major event in the county every year. That is what fund balance and one-time monies are for, is to address those one-time events. And then also, as working with the board, one of the things that we did remove is $1 million of undesigned contingency. That was the BOC's $200,000 apiece that we had done this last year. That has been removed to help balance the budget. So again, taking some conservative approaches of how we get there without adversely impacting taxpayers. So we did take a hard look at all those, and you'll see a few others. Some of these are simply shifting between lines. But as we walk through a lot of these, these are simply based on spend history, forecasting, and trend of how we identify these. So you're things, things like gas, diesel, and fuel. This is based on usage and the estimated cost of fuel where we have been for the last couple of years. This does not contemplate a major increase, it is simply to try to bring budgets up to actual spend as we walk through these. And then there's a variety of other ones as we walk through, but is there any specific questions? You'll see items like electricity, sanitation, but Commissioner Sheffield, did you have a question? I'm sorry.
On contribution at 1.4, can you describe what that is?
Absolutely. So that is part of our service delivery agreement with the six cities. So we have to make an annual payment each fall of each year, and when we completed our service delivery agreement, we did have a budgetary line. This is the increase that is required to make this fall's payment. So that is what that contribution is, and thank you for that question. Any other questions on the budget recommendation slide? Yes, Commissioner?
Bill, just kind of, let's go to the undesigned contingency for the Board of Commissioners.
Yes, ma'am.
'Cause I know this is one of my questions that hasn't been addressed.
Sure.
So, the million had been divided out, but it was supposed to cover our operating costs. So, for example, we just talked about copiers.
Sure.
So if I need a print cartridge for my office, and I no longer have this contingency, how would that get paid? And then also, like I just did, a mailing to a bunch of constituents, so I know I had a postage fee. How would current Board of Commissioner expenses that are, you know, related to business of the county be handled if that million dollars is taken away?
Okay, so, a couple things. The $200,000 was to use at the Commissioner's discretion, obviously it did have to come before the board. So you could use it for a project, you could use it for operation, you could use it whatever those purposes were, but they did have to come before the board. So that was part of that 200K, and that was removed. So to your point, each of the Commissioners, including the Chair, does have an operating budget. It is a small operating budget, but that's something that we're working on, that would include those type of expenses. But one of the items that you have as available resource is that county has countywide, for example, countywide copiers, countywide supplies, those are available to you without a special charge. If you have a special need that is not part of that countywide programming or supplies, that you would be able to charge that to your budget, but that is your discretion, because we load it as an operating cost. You could use that for travel, you could use that for printer, for flyers, whatever you may need it for, but just as any other department in the county, you always have the ability to bring an agenda item and say, I need to do A, B, and C, and you bring that forward, just as you would with the 200K. It has to come as an agenda item and ask the board for their approval to use additional funds. So that is still an option, and the process is exactly the same. We just aren't designating that specifically as part of the operating budget for each of you, but if there was a project in Commissioner Gamble's district, or Commissioner Burrell's district, Commissioner Sheffield's district, or the Chair, any of you always have that right inability to bring an agenda item and ask for it. It could be for a special event, a project, working with DOT or parks, whatever that may be, that is always an option available to each and every one of you. Okay, any other questions? Okay, I'm just gonna hit the last slide to show the highlights here, so we're gonna walk down through these. We already showed the increase is 48 million. We're gonna hit a few of these, obviously the general fund being the largest fund of that is gonna be 18.3, Fires, 7. And then most of our other funds remain relatively flat as we kinda go through this process. Again, these are our governmental funds, but they account for 33.3 million of the overall increase, general fund and fire being the big drivers, as well as claims. And then our other big driver is water. And again, we already pointed out that water's main driver is simply water purchases, chemicals, and as part of operations. So of the 13.8, a little over 11 million of that is operations alone, not expansion, just paying for what we're doing today. Any questions on the budget? And again, all of this is available online. We do encourage our citizens to go out there, and if you would like a copy of the presentation, we're happy to email it to you, but it will be posted as well.
No, I think we're good. No, I saw somewhere in one of the slides, positions being created, but you did share, at least in a prior meeting, that that is not part of the general fund.
That is correct. So a part of our highlight slide, as we stated earlier, we're doing four positions, two for fire and two for water. No new general fund positions.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
The senior county attorney position?
That was done via an agenda item and prior to the budget process, so that is an impact item and is listed as such, but not a new position being created. And I do wanna leave you with the schedule, and I'll leave this up there maybe while we have the public hearing, so the citizens can see, but it does follow the same schedule as the millage.
Okay, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you.
With that, similar to our prior hearing, I will open up this hearing for an unlimited number of speakers to address this matter and this matter only, and you'll have up to three minutes to do so. We'll go ahead and take our first speaker.
My only objection to this budget...
I know, we know who you are, but just state your name for her record.
Okay, Denny Wilson, District 4. My only objection to the budget is I'm opposed to you guys cutting the fire fund. I mean, within this new city of Mayleton, there's not a day go by that we don't have a fire truck racing somewhere. I mean, and when I say not a day go by, I mean, there's not a day go by. I mean, I'm on Hillcrest, they coming downhill, Chris, they coming down May with the Parkway, and I don't know what's going on, where the fires are, but I know we can hear the trucks racing. So I'm just opposed to you, you guys, really cutting the fire fund. And the other thing is, this probably not, a little bit off of the topic, but Commissioner Sheffield, I text you Saturday to tell you that, thank you for the signage on Hillcrest, and thank you for the completion of the sidewalks on Hillcrest. There's a little bit of imperfection, but I'll take that up with our DOT director, who's just been phenomenal in helping us to get this sidewalk project finished. And thank you for seeing it through, you know, and not delaying it like the previous. You were able to get in there, get it done, and the street looks a lot better, you know, than it did before the sidewalks came. And that's why I text you to say thank you... And that's why I text you to say thank you for the signage, because now we can clearly see, you know, you used to cut out, you couldn't tell where you were going, which way you were going.
I'm sorry to interject, even though I know your comments are gracious. We do need to constrain the comments to the budget.
Well, that's within the budget, is it not?
It's blond.
Okay, well, anyway, anyway, moving on from that. And also, too, I noticed that Chairwoman Cupid, you mentioned the school board twice, and I'm not going to hesitate to mention to you because you've got small kids. I mean, the school board is, yeah, you mentioned them twice in the previous thing, and the school board is responsible for the education of our children. So don't direct citizens to go attack the school board because they did not roll back their millage. I mean, because I've spoken with some of them, and I know the situation as to, you know, why they decided to keep it flat as well. Thank you.
We'll take our next speaker.
Tracy Stevenson, we're going to touch on the water fund again now that I have some numbers. Our cost went up 11.4 million. Just in the $8 fee, we're raising $2 million a month, or 24 million. I can't square that circle. That means that extra money just in the water fund fee, I mean, the, was it maintenance fee, the $8 per month? That covers the transfer as well as the overage, or thereabouts, within a million dollars. So then we've got that 7% water increase already. Can you square the circle for me? That's what I'm asking. I mean, none of that makes sense to me. I may not be a rocket scientist, but none of the math works. Thank you.
Al Barth. I'm back here one more time to talk about these million-dollar handouts. You're reaching in our back pocket. It's our money. It's no biggie, but let's say that we took a million dollars and we threw it into a dog kennel. Let's say we took a million dollars and we threw it into the Veterans Memorial. That's never going to get built because nobody seems to be riding the ship. This is like the Korean ship. It's leaning. We have to fix these things. You can't keep throwing money at problems. When it comes down to the dog kennel or something like that, Cobb County is full of great people with great companies. We're going to have to learn to reach out and use our resources within the county. Let's say Superior Plumbing, Loud, Ma'am, we could go on forever, The Braves. We've got some deep-pocketed people, Home Depot. We've got to learn to use some of these resources to help us along. We don't have to do it all ourselves. If it's so easy to reach out and say, "I'll just take this and throw it over there," then you're not working. Work for it. Thank you.
Good morning. My name's Craig Harfoot. In the budget there, it's not like this electrical increase. I was wondering about natural gas, too. And it ties into what we actually do in this county, like the Lower Roswell Road Project. It's all litigated to the max, but you condemn property just to put a turn lane in. Well, we're in like the fifth month of, they're changing gas pipes this big, moving them, millions of dollars. And, you know, if you say the county isn't paying for that, guess what? The county is in our electrical bills and our gas bills because right now, the gas bills that are sent to everybody in our county have, the higher charge is for the pipeline, not the actual gas used. So, I mean, when you have this built-in problem, it's like the budget's never going to get solved. And it's like, it goes back to highest and best use, and corporate profits are everything. I mean, it explains what's wrong with everything because we didn't have mountains of garbage and to have to deal with landfills and such in budgets back in the '50s. Everything was recycled. If there was some paper, it got thrown in the furnace and burned, you know? But today, corporation's so big that plastic's a problem for all of us. I mean, they're finding it in your brains. So, you know, you just need to, you know, I see they're talking about eliminating plastic bags. You can eliminate all plastic. Just say you've got to use recyclable, well, not even recyclable, returnable, refillable bottles, or use powders. You've got to be, we've got to get a whole lot smarter. And profits, if everything's determined in profits, and if our property taxes are raised because highest and best use, well, highest and best use would probably be leave it all natural, growing in trees, not how many people can we get in it? How much can we sell it for in fake money that keeps inflating where we can't even afford to live in anything? I mean, we've got to get a whole lot smarter about all this stuff, and we need a dialogue in the community. And I don't care if it's, it's got to be nonpartisan because the partisan stuff is just nonsense. It isn't solving anything. And I really think that we could come up with better solutions here in Cobb. We don't have to buy into the whole, you know, but, you know, everybody telling us how to live where we live.
Mr. Harfoot, your time's up.
Not seeing any. We'll go ahead and close the hearing. Commissioners, I'll just go down the dais to see if you have any questions. I'll begin with you, Commissioner Gambro. Okay, Commissioner Burrow. Commissioner Sheffield?
I don't have any questions, but I would like Bill to address the fire fund reduction. I know that you've had conversations with the chief, so if you can just share a little bit about that conversation and the reason it was reduced or proposed being reduced.
Thank you, Commissioner. So, yes, we are proposing a reduction of .02 mils. It equates to a million dollars. So want to be clear, we are not cutting the fire fund. The fire fund is still growing. So one of the key slides that Mr. Tesar shared earlier was regarding the fire fund is very similar to the Board of Education's growth, right? It doesn't have that floating homestead exemption that the general fund does. So it is growing at a faster rate. So all we're doing is trying to slow that growth down, so the fire fund is continuing to grow. And the board has done a great job since 2018. In 2018, the board made a decision that we wanted to approve some of our rating criteria, and that was cash balance on hand as well as fund balance. That wasn't just for the general fund, that's countywide, and you have done tremendous strides in that. We no longer borrow with hands, so we don't do those tax anticipation notes anymore. We don't have to pay interest on a loan. We are simply running on a cash basis. Fire has grown and seen the benefits of that, as has the general fund, but just at a faster rate because the general fund does have the floating homestead exemption. So, again, we're not proposing to cut any fire operations. Fire operations continue to grow and expand, just like any other operations in the county. We are funding their capital replacement at the highest level that we ever have, so they are going to be current on any of their capital request needs. We're simply asking to slow that growth down because it is, it doesn't have that floating homestead exemption. So to give you an idea, from 2018, when the board made this decision, the fire fund had roughly $35 million of fund balance. In 2024, it's 107. So that is tremendous growth during that time. So we have met those watermarks to say we made a conscious decision to improve that. And if you remember, a few years ago, we shifted when we closed out the general fund, or, sorry, the general obligation bonds, we shifted .13 mils from the debt service to fire, and we're simply saying we're going to reduce that by .02. So fire had some funding challenges, and we have felt like we have addressed those to the point, but the real estate market has been so successful, and the digest has grown so successful without having that floating homestead that the general fund has, it has kind of outpaced some of the needs. So they will still have an $11 million contingency of part of the 2026 adopted budget, which will be used to address and has to be used to address fire needs, whether that's personnel, operating capital, what have you. It has to remain in fire. We cannot send money outside of fire for any other purpose other than a fire project. So, again, just trying to slow that growth, and we want to do it in a conservative way. We don't want to take that where you would have a proposed millage rate that would go down so significantly, you'd be back next year asking for a millage rate increase. So we want to take some very small baby steps to slow that growth down while not negatively impacting fire. So that was part of that critical conversation. I know we met with each of you, we met with Director Register, met with the chief, and very, that was part of our messaging. We want to make sure their requests are funded, and this reduction will have no impact on those requests.
Okay, thank you for that explanation.
You're welcome.
Now I have some comments.
Sure.
Okay, first of all, Bill, the fire fund is everything, operation, equipment, personnel, salaries, everything is for fire, is paid out of that. And I was here when we reduced it before.
Yes.
And finally got it back, what, two years ago? Went back up to the 2.99?
9.9, yeah.
Okay, and they may have a surplus now, but they have to operate everything they do out of the fire fund. So I don't support moving it from one place to the other. I'm sorry, but I think it needs to stay in the fire fund. I don't want to go through reducing it and then having to pay it back again. And that, I know it's a million dollars, .02 mils, so is that going to go into the general fund?
No, it is a simple reduction. There's no millage shift. The general fund is remaining as is. We're just simply reducing Fire Fund's millage by .02 mil.